It's been a great morning so far for us. We got to visit the Arkansas State Child Development Center and just had a wonderful time visiting with the students and the teachers. I personally was very impressed with the center and how much training they do statewide, and it was just a wonderful morning. Do any of the board members want to comment? Come on, Lisa.
Anybody else want to go first? But I absolutely had the best time. It was a phenomenal program, and I had so many questions, and Taylor was our host. She did a fabulous job answering all of them. One of the key pieces that I saw that this center was able to do that other centers sometimes don't prioritize, they really prioritize continuity of care. So the kids that enter their program in August stay with that teacher for the entirety of the year regardless of development. That can be tricky in private pay facilities. Often you'll see students will age out, they'll move them to a toddler room so they can get another infant in that's a higher paying. And I get that for sustainability, but we know that's not best practice. We know that's not how you build relationships and brain building. And so to see this in practice and to see it working year after year was just phenomenal. In fact, there was one classroom where the group was three to five. So a child could potentially stay with the same educators for two years, which is better for the family, better for the kids, and removes the transition time, the screening time, all that stuff. It was just a phenomenal thing to see. And she pointed out, she goes, you'll notice there's no worksheets here. And so of course not, that's not developmentally appropriate practices. Instead, it was, they were studying insect. So the kids had gathered sticks for the six legs and a giant leaf for the abdomen. And it was just a phenomenal program. I want to dig more into the Arkansas-based nature curriculum that, forgive me, I forget the name, but Mallory White, perhaps Marcy White, was the author of, that is a free curriculum and available to all teachers here in Arkansas. Certainly was on display today, and it was just great to see. So I really do appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Well, I'll be very brief. You know, you said it really well. I was very impressed. My first time actually visiting the center. And I've been to other centers. I was incredibly impressed. I really liked the fact that we had employees that's been here for 20 years and 10 years. That shows that you guys are doing something right.
Ms. Woods?
I'll just echo what everybody else has said. I have a three, four-year-old right now, and so that, those are my people. So it was a lot of fun.
Well, we'll take a moment for a moment of silence this morning, just to get kind of focused and be focused on our children across the state. Okay, thank you very much. We have several board members online this morning. Dr. Sarah Moore is traveling, but she has been able to join us this morning online. And also Ms. Hunter is with us. So greetings to both of you. I'm glad you could join us. We've got a welcome from Dr. Todd Shields this morning.
Good morning, everyone. So glad that you're here. Welcome to A-State if you haven't been here before. I'm relatively newcomer. I've been here 18 months. In the past 18 months, I've seen a lot of change that's happened here at A-State. In fact, I've really never worked with the faculty that are so quick to change. That's not my experience in higher education, but that has been the case here. And in particular, I want to say, I think a lot of people, even people that have been here for a while, Randy, don't realize the amount of research that actually comes out and is done here at A-State. I guess it's about eight, nine years ago that A-State became a Carnegie II Classified Research Institution. The faculty and staff don't realize how close they are to a Carnegie I. We're not trying to make that a big announcement because we don't want to flip them out yet, right? But they are very, very close. A lot of the research does come from the Department, the College of Education, but I'm not going to steal any of Dean Bradley's thunder here. One of the major things that's happened so quickly is the steel industry, and Randy knows that in many ways, I say, we're the new Pittsburgh Steelers, you know, we're the Northeast Arkansas Steelers now, I guess. And one of the things we're doing in the Engineering College is quickly turn to what the needs are of this industry. And there are a lot of needs that we're, haven't been supplying, but will be, we will be starting even this fall doing that. We rearranged our Research and Proposal Development Center, and I'm really happy to say we have massive success in that. Again, faculty willing change so quickly. Just as an example, last year, there was about $18 million in external-funded research that has, that was funded. And this year already, we've submitted almost $70 million in proposals. And then we've gotten a lot of great feedback on half of that. So we're really seeing a lot of faculty doing a lot of that. And so really trying to change the idea that not only are we small class sizes and a great university for your students to come, and faculty will actually know their student's name, but we're also a real research powerhouse that we really haven't gotten that word out yet. And wanted to, want to make sure that you knew that. And also just seriously say, welcome to A-State. And if there's anything we can do to help while you're here, let us know. And we hope you come back again soon. And then we'll keep checking bowling scores.
If I could just make a comment and thank Dr. Shields and your team for hosting. I think it's fitting that A-State's colors are red and black because you have definitely rolled out the red carpet for us and allowing us to be here for Children's Week. And it's nice for our board, as we're trying to have board meetings throughout the different state to learn more about the types of learning opportunities there are for our students in the different regions and how the work that we're doing as a board, the work that we're doing to implement LEARNs, the work that we're doing to make sure our pathways are aligned. Each region of state is going to have those unique opportunities and pathways. So the team here, I think it's nice to report to the board, from day one, has rolled out the red carpet and has been a thought partner and has helped us with implementation and rulemaking and gave us access to their deans and their professors. And we're just really grateful for your leadership and the work that you do. So thank you. And for those that don't know, Arkansas State has a premier bowling program that is in the Final Four, and they're getting ready to start round one here pretty soon. So exciting day.
Well, Dean Bradley, we'd love to hear from you this morning. And tell us about some of your educational programs that you've got going.
Thank you. I would love to do so. And I was told to be brief, but I can go on and on and on. So I've highlighted three, but I'll be glad to highlight a few more. I want to say good morning and welcome to Arkansas State University. It is my alma mater. I have three degrees from Arkansas State University, and I'm proud to be a Red Wolf. It is my honor and privilege to be here today. We hosted Secretary Oliva in late of last year, and he interviewed, talked with faculty and staff, and toured the Child Development Center, what you toured this morning. We are happy to have him back and so pleased to have the board on our campus. We are proud of our campus. I want to highlight three major initiatives. Now, I have many more, but I would like to highlight three major initiatives of the LEARNs Act that we are implementing in the College of Education and Behavioral Science. First, we have an educator in all 75 counties of Arkansas. And I happen to have a heat map. Yep. I happen to have a heat map that demonstrates that. In many counties, we have hundreds of graduates, just like right here in Craig County. These include classroom teachers, reading specialists or literacy specialists, school counselors, school psychologists, principals, superintendents, and curriculum spec GT coordinators. According to the A-State Census Report, in the fall of '23, we have matriculated between 1,481 to 1,732 graduates each year for the past five years that are in licensure programs. We have other students also in the College of Education. We usually run around 4,200 to 4,600 students in the College of Education and Behavioral Science, and approximately 90% of them get licensed. So we're really proud of that. Linking to literacy in the LEARNs Act, the College of Education and Behavioral Science has had 235 graduates in literacy this past year, as well as 221 enrolled for fall of 2023. As we say, we educate Arkansas. In addition to the reading specialist that's directly linked to LEARNs, we usually have approximately 1,000 leadership graduates each year, and we currently have 400, approximately 400, in the school counseling program. So we feel like we are helping the state with the whole child, meeting the development areas of all of them. Second, the College of Education and Behavioral Science is fortunate to have childhood services, a community service outreach under the direction of Joanne Nally, the individual you met today that rolled out the red carpet. Through this outreach, we provide access, coordination, and quality education for young children and their families by administering early childhood programs that offer affordable service. For more than 40 years, we have provided in-service staff development, workshops for families, and technical assistance and coaching for educators of young children. If you would love to come to Arkansas State University again in August, Joanne Nally will have a state conference, and she will have hundreds of early educators on this campus, and they will be doing staff development and having national speakers. One impressive part of the childhood services is the unit called the Child Development Center, a licensed daycare offering care and educational experiences for up to 236 children, ranging from about six to eight weeks to age five. I was fortunate to have one of my four grandchildren be in the Child Development Center. She is excelled, she's in kindergarten, and she is excelling in kindergarten. So I'm very proud to have had one. The other two, the younger ones, were COVID babies, that's what I call them. Anyway, they, it was just the world was turned upside down at that time, and so they were home much more than the other ones were. And third, to assist with creating a strong pipeline of effective educators, we have implemented residency and aspiring teacher programs. We are very proud of our residency program. A year ago, we did not have a residency program. In the fall, we implemented one. Our candidates in the residency program experience a year-long capstone internship under the auspices of an experienced mentor classroom teacher in one of our partnership districts. Candidates in the program commence the academic year with a highly qualified classroom teacher, benefit from the daily presence of a site coordinator, and implement co-teaching strategies to address student needs and enhance achievement. Consequently, with two sets of hands in the classroom, we reduce the student-teacher ratio for those children in that classroom, which we are very proud of. Two sets of hands are so much better. We started with five brave volunteers and have grown the program just this, these two semesters to 20 residents in the fall of 2024. The program to assist with teacher shortages in the state is the aspiring teacher permit. We were so excited last summer. We had a school district right here in our backyard. Matter of fact, we have five school districts within the city limits of Jonesboro. We had one of our school districts reach out to us and said, we have two openings. This is, this is the first. I'd never heard of this before in Northeast Arkansas from the districts within our backyard. Said, we have two vacancies in our class, in our school this year. And I said, I think the aspiring teacher permit will work for you. We also had one this semester that is an aspiring teacher. So we have them out in the schools doing their traditional internship, earning a salary of $50,000, and they are filling a vacancy. All they lacked were their internship experiences, and they are filling those vacancies. Currently, we are gathering data to assess how our candidates influence student learning, employ research-based best practices, and adapt instruction based upon our students' needs. The initiatives outlined anchored with the LEARNs Act signifies our steadfast dedication to advancing educational opportunities across Arkansas. From the extensive network of educators spanning all 75 counties to our longstanding commitment to early childhood and our innovative education programs, we believe we are making a difference for the state of Arkansas. Together, let us continue to champion progress and excellence in education, shaping a brighter future for all. Thank you for your unwavering support and dedication to our shared mission. Now, I have a few other things I'd like to share with you.
I said, go ahead. We're here, we're here to visit.
Okay. We also have something called the HELP Transition Program. HELP stands for Helping Our Wolves Learn. And what that is, is a program for high schoolers who have intellectual disabilities and autism. And so they come out of the high school, they come into a two-year program, and we focus on providing them the skills necessary to live an independent, productive life. And so the last year, they do a lot of job shadowing, and before they exit the program, we assist in helping them get a job. We have jobs all the way from the mayor's office to Joanne Nally's Child Development Center. So we're very, very proud of that. We just recently were approved to do a third and fourth year for the transition program. We call it ATLAS. It's a different name. We call it ATLAS. And so there are individuals that are in that first and second year HELP program that wants to go on, and they want an associate's degree. And we want them to have an associate degree from Arkansas State University. Dr. Kristin Johnson is the creator and the coordinator of that program. Not only has she developed that, but she also has recently acquired $30.1 million from a contract from Arkansas Department of Human Services. Again, it's focusing on individuals, both adults and children, who are disabled and need more services, and we need to do implementation of science, and we need to do research and find out what all is working and what is not working. There's also a business acuity associated with it. So we're very, very proud of that. Before the pandemic, one of my former students contacted me and said, I want you to partner with us. I said, tell me more. And so Melody Morgan, who she had had me in undergraduate teacher ed program when she was here, she said, the Arkansas Leadership Academy, we have a possibility of acquiring that, or at least applying for it, she said. And I said, who would we be partnering with? She said, Edutoss out of Oklahoma, Arkansas Public School Resource Center, and then of Arkansas State University College of Education and Behavioral Science. And I said, I'd love to. I'd love to be a part of that. So we spent mostly online, because it was during COVID. We wrote the proposal, we presented it, and we were awarded the money, $1.4 million to implement the Arkansas Leadership Academy at, with our partnership. It was in a different institution in the state.
The one we do not mention.
But anyway, it's a wonderful partnership. We are responsible for the leadership of the master principal program. It's a wonderful staff development for principals who have had at least one year of experience in schools. And they can actually designate, and when they designate, they have to do a portfolio in order to do that, and they have to show growth within the school. And so we believe we're doing a lot of great things when it comes to that. Let me think of another one. It's off the top of my head. We were the pioneer of online programs within the state. That is one of the reasons that we have quite a few students, 4,000. But we also believe we have quality programs. So we not only have asynchronous online programs, but our faculty are proud that they Zoom at least weekly with the entire group. It's not required for the students to actually be on Zoom with them, but we tape it and we send it out to them. So we feel like we have really done. And we were the first college at Arkansas State University to implement the online learning. We actually implemented it in the masters during practice, helping students, a master's degree program, helping students to hone their teaching skills. We also have the Kern Family Foundation. And so we received somewhere around $325,000, $350,000 a couple of years ago, and we are implementing character within our leadership programs. Dr. Beverly Gilbert has led that, and she has written a grant for $50,000. We hope we get approved, awarded. And that will be to implement it within the entire university, even undergraduates. So we wanted to start with our leaders within the school.
What?
All cabinet.
Yes, yes. And yes, and we had Clifton Talbert. And we also have a book. We all read it, and Dr. Shields even had the cabinet to read it. It's wonderful. Last August, we had Dr. Talbert on campus, and he did the presentation at the opening session of the College of Education and Behavioral Science. Very inspiring, very, very inspiring. I just thought of something, went right out. I thought of something, I forgot. I think of it. Any questions?
What was the name of the book that you all read? What was the name of the book?
Values and Leadership.
Uh huh, uh huh. And it had long?
Its subtitle was basically character development, and it's very much about how much, if you're leading without character or value, you're causing more harm.
You might need to come to the mic.
Oh.
I don't know if they can hear you online, Dr. Shields, if you don't mind coming back.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
So it's a, it's a book about character and values in leadership. And if you're not infusing those values through everything you do in leadership, whether you're teaching or holding a meeting or anything like that, then you're doing more damage than you are good. And if you're interested, I'll make sure you get a copy.
That'd be great.
So could you tell me one more time the name of it? You kind of broke up.
I'm almost positive it's Character and Leadership, but I'll make sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I know I've left something out, but.
Well, this has been wonderful for us to really get out and visit. I know it's, I hate to say this, but it's my first time here.
Well, welcome.
And this is very impressive, very impressive.
Well, matter of fact, I'm not originally from the state of Arkansas, and I was not supposed to come to the state of Arkansas, but I did, and I didn't leave. So I'm very happy, very pleased to be here.
So how many years have you been, Dean?
Unlike Todd, I have been here 37 years.
Wow, that is fabulous.
I worked 20 years as the licensure officer and director of the Professional Education Programs Office. And what that means is, we worked with the schools to do all of the placements and the partnerships. And so fortunately, I taught for nine years, then I did that for 20 years. So I know a lot of individuals around the state of Arkansas. Matter of fact, many of them will come up to me and say, I recognize your voice. You taught me. And so I'm very proud of that.
That's wonderful. And you need to be proud of all that you're doing. So thank you for being here with us today.
And if I could, thank you, Dean Bradley and Dr. Shields, again, for your partnerships and willingness to work with us and making our state better. And I love the fact that you have the heat map and keep the data, because I felt like after we've been working on some initiatives, it's important for the board to know that right here at ASU, that they really, really do feed the pipeline of talent directly into our classrooms. And then even more importantly, some of the next phase of a lot of educators' careers, that pipeline into leadership. And your impact is, is great, and it's, it's well received. And we really genuinely appreciate learning more about the programs and how we can continue to work together.
Thank you.
We have another really special guest online this morning. She was able to join us several months ago and visit with us about being Miss Natural State Teen. So Mallory Stuckey is joining us online this morning, and she came and really visited with us about her, her program on skin safety. And I know Secretary Oliva has something special he wanted to bring to us today.
Yeah, so it's, it's good to have Mallory online. And as Ms. Rollins stated, that she's been, she's not a stranger to our board. She's been in front of us with some great initiatives. And in fact, the last time we presented, we were working on nailing down and seeing if we can get a board resolution to declare Sun Safety Week, and worked with Mallory, and she worked with some of our folks here at our agency on some kind of lessons that we can share with districts. So Mallory, I want to see if you have an update that you want to give to the board, and then maybe we can read the resolution and see if our board would like to formally adopt it. So welcome.
Mallory, I believe you're on mute.
I'm so excited. And saying, I'm mute, can you hear me?
Okay. I think you're starting to come in now, so go ahead and try again.
I'm so excited and thank you, Sun Safety Week in Arkansas. This week, we recognize May 10th of this year. I created a flyer of daily themes for students participating. Each day also has a keyword, cancer statistics. I created a book for elementary students that reviews ways for kids to remember how to stay safe in the sun. I was in kindergarten because I was about me, Sun Safety. These documents are already on the AB website for anyone access. We have a commitment to schools across Arkansas State, and so later, we'll be able to easily access this safety video again. And in my new Sun Safety Week, hopefully together, we can educate our students on how to love and protect their skin and motivate in cancer statistics.
Well, Mallory, we're able to look at your materials this morning, and they, they look great. And I think they'll be really effective with our students. This is such an important issue to all of us.
Yes. So what, what we would like to do is, it's great that we have the product that Mallory helped create it, and as stated, it's on our website. We're going to do a formal memo, kind of as next steps to school districts, to make them aware that we have kind of a proclamation resolution and see if we can, you know, champion school districts to participate and celebrate Sun Safety Week as well. And then what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, Chair, is kind of read a board resolution and then see if the board would like to formally adopt that.
Okay.
Whereas just one blistering sunburn in childhood or adolescence may double the chances of developing melanoma later in life. And whereas school-based programs on sun safety are an effective way to teach children at an early age how to protect themselves and help decrease their risk of developing skin cancer as adults. And whereas, the American Association for Cancer Research recognizes May as Melanoma and Skin Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas, the Skin Cancer Foundation and the American Academy of Dermatology recognize May as Skin Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas, the traditional school year in August ends in May. And whereas, many end of school year and summer activities occur outdoors, exposing skin to sun and increasing the risk of sunburn and skin damage from ultraviolet rays. And whereas, sunburns and skin damage are avoidable with proper precautions. And whereas, sunburns and skin damage are avoidable with proper precautions. And whereas, Miss Natural State Teen Mallory Stuckey from Ryzen, Arkansas, has selected Sun Safety as her platform and shared her concerns and advocacy efforts across the state of Arkansas and was recognized by the State Board of Education on February eighth, two thousand twenty-four, for her efforts around sun safety. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Arkansas State Board of Education, recognize May twenty twenty-four as Melanoma and Skin Cancer Awareness Month and May sixth through tenth, two thousand twenty-four, as Sun Safety Week in Arkansas Public Schools.
That's wonderful. We're so excited that you brought this issue in front of us, a very important issue. And we are so excited to bring this forward this morning. Does our board have any comments they'd like to make to Mallory this morning? Okay. All right. Then we've got a vote that we need to take on this State Board of Education resolution. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? All right. Well, congratulations, Mallory, and thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us today.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we've got the action agenda in front of us this morning. Are there any changes to the agenda? No changes? Okay. Did anyone have any items to pull out for discussion on the action agenda? We'll move forward then. Ms. Smith?
Good morning, Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner with the Arkansas Department of Education. All right, first, action agenda is a district waiver for Genoa Central. It is a school start date waiver. If you'll notice in this waiver, it was one that the co-op put in for, like as a group, and this is a district that's come in a little bit later. They asked for five years. Your past waivers that you have approved for the state start dates, you've amended to one year. So, I just wanted to bring that back up for you from past practices on that. But this is the same start date waiver that you've seen numerous school districts across the state request.
Board, do we have any questions on this item? We'll need a motion then to either approve or not approve this item for one year.
I'll move to approve for one year.
Stacy, the request is for five years?
Yes.
And?
Yes, ma'am.
So, how do?
Yes, ma'am, the request is for five years. And that has been the same on all the other waivers. If this board chooses to amend the number of years, you would need to state that in your motion. So, if you were going to approve it for the five years, you could say we request as they requested, or you could amend it to the one year.
Thank you.
So, I make a motion that we approve the waiver for one year.
Okay, second. It's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
The second waiver is another school start date waiver, and it's by Spring Hill School District. It was also requested for five years as well. And so, I would ask for a motion to approve the Spring Hill one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and amend for one year.
Okay. We've got a motion.
Second.
Okay. Second by Ms. Keener. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
All right, the next action item is for Asylum Springs School District for a waiver request on class size. I want to make a comment about, we have frequently seen these class size ones come up each month. And this is new because we created our system in which we can tell every single month when we're off on class size. We're actually working on some rule amendments that will correct that so we're not having to have this every single month come before the board. So, hopefully, that'll be something that'll be corrected before we get into next school year. This is a request from Asylum Springs in second grade. They are one student over, and they are asking for a waiver to be able to go over and not have to hire an additional second grade teacher this late in the school year. And we have seen these before, and the department does not have a concern.
So, it is just for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
Yes, ma'am, this year, yes, this year.
Okay.
That way, they don't get a standards for accreditation violation.
Oh, okay.
Okay, because they're not meeting the standard of having the right class size. So, now, they're asking for a waiver for that. So, they will not be cited and come before the board in May because they violated a standards for accreditation. But we're going to hopefully be able to correct that in the way our standards are written. And this won't be something you'll have to see over and over again.
Okay.
So, they want it for the next six weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just out of curiosity on the dates, how come we didn't see this last month? Because it looks like they submitted on February nineteenth.
It might have been a review process and then the number of days to get onto your agenda and that type of thing.
We'll need a motion then to either approve or deny this request. When you're ready.
It's so few of us, so many of us are going to be talking today. I'll move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
The next waiver request is for Smackover Norflet. This waiver request is actually for the licensure of a superintendent. In the letter, it states that their superintendent resigned in February. I don't have the details of that resignation. It looks like the district has asked this person to step in for the remainder of this year only.
Okay.
She has put in here her credentials that she's been with the district for twenty-two years. She's in her twenty-eighth year of education. She has served as an elementary principal and a classroom teacher and is currently a part of their district administrative staff. So, the department does not have a concern at this time for this being asked for, only for the remainder of this year, while they look for a superintendent.
All right.
Now, for the remainder of this whole year with a superintendent, it's different than a classroom teacher because their contract would go through June thirtieth, is that right?
So, this is, so, this contract is through June thirtieth too. But most likely, they're going to be on the search for a superintendent, and they'll probably put a superintendent on a contract July one.
Okay.
And we just, we assume the board, their board is okay with this as well?
Yes, this was a request from their employees and their board.
Okay, all right. Are there any further questions? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ross Watt, Director for the Division of Career and Technical Education. So, today, we have Act five forty-six, the Arkansas Adult Diploma Act, back in front of you for some rule pieces. So, with those rules, you've previously seen them, and we've had some updates. So, we're bringing them back to you. I think, believe there are two pieces you'll be looking at today. One's the emergency rules, because it's already in motion. And then, the rules that will go up for public comment. So, the last time we presented this, kind of a lot of questions. So, we have a little bit of a presentation to go through what this is based off the legislation for each of you, just so you know kind of where we're at. So, Act five forty-six was passed, obviously, in the session last spring. So, what it has done is obviously allocated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the Department of Commerce through the Office of Skills Development for us to be able to do the Adult Diploma Act. It gave the Department of Ed, obviously, the oversight and the rulemaking process for this. So, then, that's where it's falling with us in regards to it actually happening, but with our partners there at Commerce for the dollars. So, it is designed for adults, since it's the Adult Diploma Act. So, it is for individuals that are over the age of twenty-one that obviously do not have a high school diploma. And the goal there is to obtain a high school diploma and so that it can obviously give them a skill set and employability skill set for the next piece. And then, to align well with a lot of the work we're doing in learns and all things is obviously to prepare them for a high wage and then a high demand or high-growth career here in the state of Arkansas. So, with that, currently, we rate forty-second in the U.S. for high school diplomas with adults. And so, obviously, that right there is a concern. We know, we see concerns too in the state with people attempting to obtain their GED. And so, this is where, and that gives them that other path so they can actually earn that high school diploma. And so, that is an additional pathway. We obviously have a great adult ed program through the Department of Commerce already. And so, this is just an additional pathway for adults in Arkansas to be able to get that high school diploma. Because we know that not necessarily every pathway works for every person. And so, this is an additional path there. And as I mentioned, it's already kind of a complement to the work we're doing in learns, especially to align that with demand careers and then careers that are growing within our state. And then, of course, that family sustaining wage becomes a really important part, that we are giving them skill sets and trainings to get their high school diploma, but also that the skills that we put within them can help them achieve one of those careers in a family sustaining wage. So, through that, we had to go through an RFQ process for this, for vendors, because this is the way the legislation is written, is that vendors will be the ones providing it. And so, through that RFQ process that occurred this past fall, those are our four vendors that were, the four that submitted and the four that met the qualifications. And then, what they are then qualified to do is the five bullet items there at the bottom, that's what they can receive reimbursement for. So, they can be reimbursed for helping that individual earn high school credit, of course, the completion of a certification that is applied to a skill, the attainment of a workforce credential that requires that fifty to a hundred hours of training, or an additional workforce credential over a hundred hours of training. And so, we broke those two up because, obviously, there are many workforce credentials that go well over a hundred hours. And so, there becomes a little bit of a cost difference there. And then, the last one is then, of course, attaining the high school diploma. And that's the ultimate goal of the program. But we know that being able to do any of those are a piece of it. So, in the rules that you have, obviously, it spells out what that reimbursement process looks like as it was set and as we roll those rules forward, what it will be. So, these students are cohorted, and then, there's a maximum expense per student of seven thousand dollars that could occur in an academic year. And so, some of those students could complete within, I say, an academic, one fiscal year. Some students might carry into multiple fiscal years, just depending on where they come to these providers with. Because some will come with quite a bit of high school credit and just be, you know, a few credits shy of it, and some will come with almost none. And so, every adult that's going to come in front of this is going to be uniquely different. And so, there is no set one model that we can say or timeframe that it will take, because each person's a little different and what that will look like. And so, from that, again, we'll have kind of two requests. The one I believe on right now is the emergency rules. And of course, they're aligned to the legislation, and they allow us to operate currently. The legislation did have this begin in January. So, we've had students being served since January, and those providers have already been submitting to us what they've been achieving on a monthly basis. And so, we already have some of those in. And so, that'll allow us to begin to reimburse them for what's already being served to these adults. And then, of course, the rules that I've got for public comment will be what carries us through the future with this program as it continues to move forward with where we're at. So, those are our two requests. And with that, I'll take any questions you all might have about the program.
What's our current numbers that we haven't rolled across the state for adults?
So, through adult education with Department of Commerce, so I did not add those numbers. I could get them for you, but I don't.
No, I'm just curious if you knew.
So, we need to take these in two votes?
Yes, I believe there are listed as two separate items on the agenda.
Okay, okay. So, the emergency rules.
The two sets of rules should appear to be the exact same. It's just the emergency rules allow us to be able to operate with where we're currently at. Because in the legislation, this was a program that began in January. And so, we have students who are already enrolled in these programs by those providers. And so, those providers have been submitting reimbursement, but obviously, we can't do any reimbursements with them until we have approved rules. So, we have the emergency rules to carry forward once we go through the full public comment. Because we do have, out of those four providers, two that are already actively with students and enrolled.
Okay. I guess I thought we'd already passed the emergency rules.
So, what we did, we brought them to you previously. We've made some changes in the rules.
Thank you.
Yeah, no. You are not agreeing then. So, we did previously bring those to you, and there were some adjustments that needed to be made to those rules. So, we're coming forward.
And that's what you said.
We haven't had any payments that have gone out at this point. Everything's just kind of been holding.
Okay.
We do have two providers that have submitted quite a bit to us in the process.
Okay, that's great. So, are there any further questions on these? Okay, we'll go ahead and do the first one then. Rules governing the adult diploma program, the emergency rules. So, we'll need a motion on that one.
So, I move that we approve the adult diploma program emergency rules.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Keener.
Second.
Second by Mr. Henderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. The second one is rule governing the adult diploma program. And this would be approval to be released for public comment. Okay?
So, I move that we approve the Arkansas Adult Diploma Program rules to be released for public comment.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Keener.
Second.
Second by Ms. Woods. Is there any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is rules governing the school transformation contracts. And I don't have a fancy presentation, but Randy said he would dance if we needed.
Oh.
Oh, no, okay, maybe not.
Rome shoes.
Okay.
Do you have socks on? That's the question. I have extras.
So, these are the transformation contract rules. We actually discussed these in a work session a while back. And really, throughout that discussion and the work session, we have actually made some changes based on some of the feedback and the discussions and questions that were asked during that. We have a little bit of experience this board with the transformation contract and the work that we've done with Marvel Elaine. This really is supposed to be an opportunity for districts to take ownership and action prior to getting in trouble with the state authority. So, when you have a district that's in Level Four support or schools in a district that are struggling, it's the opportunity for districts to create contracts for transformation to turn their schools around. They can do it for their district, they can do it for individual schools. It allows schools to have a two-year accountability, a different accountability system in letter grade while that process is happening. School districts who seek a transformational contract with that alternative accountability have to have those transformational contracts approved by the state board. Okay? Districts, and some of the questions we were being asked were, can districts have contracts without? Yes, districts can have contracts all the time that are not approved by this board. But when you get into a transformation contract, you're looking for a district to make a, do something different, to do something, to make something work in their schools that hasn't been working. make something work in their schools that hasn't been working. All right? So that's kind of the goal and the vision for this. Some of the other questions that were asked for about schools that were under state authority, and how long you could have a transformation contract. So on page six of the rules, on 5.04, we amended that to make sure that folks know that it cannot be beyond the authority of what we have. We can't extend a transformation contract longer than the state is under authority. So we noted that in here. We moved exact years and just put the authority of the state authority piece. A district, again, we also noted in here, just to clarify, a school district that is not under state authority, if it's working for them, they could continue to contract with that provider afterwards. Okay? The transformation piece and the approval of this board is for an alternate accountability system. Okay? I'll take any questions if you have any.
Who pays for this?
So it's funded by the school district.
Okay.
So the contract, this is a contract between the school district and the provider. There has been some mention of possible incentive funding or funds in the future. So those are things that will, if there's funding available.
And tell me how this affects representation within the area. So is there a school board setup? Is that?
So here's what we'd like to see. We would like to see school districts before they ever get to this level, we would like their local school boards taking action. So let's say you have a very, very large district, and you only have one or two schools that are struggling. So that school maybe wants to do a transformation contract with a single school, bring in some type of educational operator to come in and do something different with that school, operate it in a different manner. That's local school board would go and contract with that outside educational organization to run that school. And they then could come here and ask this board for a two-year alternative accountability while they're doing the work in that school.
And are these retroactive? Is it Lee County that?
So, yeah, so Marvel Alain is a school district right now that we have a, it's under state authority. So this was a decision made by the secretary, the commissioner, acting in lieu of the board, because we dissolved the board there, and we created a transformation contract. One thing, though, that I think we did well with Marvel Alain, is we had Marvel Alain community people involved in interviewing, reviewing the applicants, making a recommendation about who they wanted. It wasn't the commissioner or myself conducting all the interviews. It was community people that had a voice in it.
So will these affect that contract, or is their contract?
So that contract is falling under these rules. So we've operated under what the law has allowed us to operate. These rules are now giving us more clarity as we move forward with future transformation contracts. Because if you remember, even with our transformation contract with Marvel, I mean, we were trying to figure stuff out. Can we do this? Can we not do this? This helps give us the rules in the playground that we can play in.
Well, and one thing I remember hearing from the superintendent there, I'm not sure if that's the correct title, but he said, "Give me three years, give me three years." And so this being two, is that strategic?
So it's only two for the alternate accountability.
Okay.
They could have that transformation contract for several years, but they'll go back under the regular accountability system.
In year three, okay.
So they can continue on with a contract. Transformation, when we're talking about something like this, and we recognize that transforming or turnaround schools takes a long time. But this is like a shot in the arm. This is something, we're doing something drastic and major to get this going, because we are not, we're failing kids, and we got to do something drastic. So transformation contracts are the opportunities for people to roll up their sleeves, try something different, because what they've been doing hasn't been working, and try something, and not be penalized with the accountability system.
Ms. Hunter, I'm glad you could join us today. Do you have any questions?
Um, I do not.
Okay, okay. Ms. Woods? Mr. Henderson?
Do not.
Are you good?
Already asked.
Dr. Moore?
Thank you. Good morning. I have talked a little bit about the timeline for this. As we're thinking about, if this were done in the future, for a school district, would a school district be able to enter into the contract? Let me rephrase this. Let me guess. Sorry, I doubt my pronoun. A school district can enter into this contract without the state, and the rules will allow for that. Correct, Stacy?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
So then, if there was a scenario where they had contracted, and then the state was seeing that they were in the very bottom percent of all schools, the state would come in and reassess that contract?
Yes, ma'am. So on page six, those were some of the points that we made different after having conversations with you. We actually put in there that if the state board assumes authority of a district in which they'd already started a transformation contract, that that contract should become void. So if we, if a school district comes, asks for a transformation contract, we, you guys allow them to continue to do so, but we don't see the progress, because there's quarterly reports coming to this board. If the progress is not being made, and this board determines that they want to take an action, then that contract would be void if you took state authority. So that was, yeah, section five.
I appreciate the piece about providing reports. Right now, with Marvel, how many, I think they've only provided us one report this year?
So they're providing quarterly reports?
Okay, they are doing quarterly.
Yes, they're doing quarterly reports. And Ms. Whitlow is the one who's keeping up with those and making sure that those get to the board.
Okay, and then this will allow us, it says the initial two years. After those two years, if the board still wanted some kind of reports, accountability mechanism that could be put in place?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, it took me a minute to get my question out.
If I could also add, I think one of the things that's exciting, as we're going through implementation with Arkansas Learns and kind of reimagining the space and how we assess teaching and learning in K-12, we're getting ready to start our pilot in our Unified Coordinated Progress Monitoring System in the K-2 space, which we haven't had. So we have some districts that are going to participate in that. But when school starts next fall, we're going to have one system statewide in ELA, in reading, K through 10, where we're going to get that snapshot in time on how our students are doing. And we can be able to compare districts to districts, or see different regions of the state, maybe different co-ops, and be able to pivot and target resources. As we've deployed over 100 literacy coaches, we're going to have real-time data that may identify areas that need additional attention. So we're not going to wait till the end of the year for some of assessments results. We're going to be able to be nimble and provide reports to the board, like Dr. Moore said. And I think it'd be great, as we provide those reports, to talk about the actions that our agency's taken to support students. So we're going to, not wait until the end of the year to realize that children had a problem. We're going to know all the way through the year and be right there, providing interventions and supports, and working with the families and schools as that's happening.
Did you have a question?
I did, something that-
Because maybe I said something wrong.
No, no, Dr. Moore said something that then made me, so in the contracts between the district and whoever they're entering into a contract, are there provisions for when it goes void?
That's established within the contract between the district and the provider.
And so they just know if this ends up failing mid-year, the state gets to come in, and it doesn't matter what expenditures you've made?
If the state assumes authority over a district, that contract would be voided.
True, okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that there probably are, I would think that the district probably, with the outside provider, probably has metrics in there of progress that needs to be met.
Okay.
And as those quarterly reports and as transformation contracts are being created, and quarterly reports are being reviewed, the state, if you approved a transformation contract, the expectation is progress is going to be made.
Sure.
If progress is not being made, then they have failed to meet the obligations in the contract. The state then could assume authority, thus then voiding the contract.
Okay. I just need someone to walk me through that.
It helps me too.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Okay. This would be to approve or not approve the rule governing school transformation contracts, and this is approval to be released for public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll move to approve. So submit to public comment.
Motion by Ms. Woods.
Second.
Second by Mr. Henderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any new business? None? Okay. In front of us then is our consent agenda. Whenever you're ready to approve the consent agenda. We'll need a motion then.
I'll make a motion for approval on the consent agenda.
Mr. Henderson has made the motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Keener. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay. And Ms. Salon, does she have a report for us today?
So Ms. Salon, she's attending another edition today, and has submitted a kind of a written report that we, it's in our package. It's to show, to provide some updated information of her journeys over the last month. She's doing wonderful work. Yeah, she is very busy.
I kind of jumped over the Watson Chapel district update. Do we have an update this morning?
Yes, we did. Good morning.
So Sheila Whitlow is online.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sheila.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, Sheila Whitlow, off of Supporting and Supportive Services. So you have written reports, I believe, this time? Does everyone have that?
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and joining us today is Mr. Wilson, the superintendent of Watson Chapel, as well as the assistant superintendent, Mrs. Dee Davis. I would like to highlight some things on the report, if that's okay. I could start with that. Ms. Salon said I'll, if I can hear you, and then we can take questions after that.
Okay.
So some things I would really like to highlight, first of all, is the work that's being done in the Student Success Plan. Because we know that when we got there, and when we arrived in the fall, that there was very little work being done in that area. And so they received a lot of training in that, and support for the district to get those implemented. And as you see in the report, they've begun work on that, starting in the eighth grade. And so that's definitely something to highlight. And the work that's going on with transcripts, because that was definitely a concern in the fall. And so that work is continuing. Dr. Chris Barnes, in our team, off of Supporting and Supportive Services, working closely with the state, is on that, and getting those transcripts updated. All of the junior and senior transcripts, according to the district, are up to date, and they're working on the ninth and 10th grade right now. So that's definitely a highlight. And then my last highlight, I attended a training, and all they trained with Andy Sullivan from Educator Effectiveness, with the principals from the district. They rotated through throughout the day. And I just wanted to commend them for their cooperation. They were very positive, and some really good conversations came about during that. And what has been nice to see as well is that they have implemented the new learning. So we've gone into EES and seen evidence of the work that they learned from their work with Mr. Sullivan. So those are areas definitely that I wanted to highlight to the board today. My concern areas, we know that the master schedule was a concern, and that really is why we went in in the fall, was because the master schedule had some problems, and students, you know, we had some issues with students not having their schedules, or their schedules were being changed frequently. So we started early working on the master schedule. They have an external provider that is coaching and working with the principals in secondary. So they have a pretty good master schedule done, but they found out last Friday that they were going to need to integrate the athletics into the master schedule, which has created some challenges. So we visited there yesterday and met with the secondary principals, and they are working on that. And I think Mistakes will need to speak to this. She said, she's been working with the junior high, junior high has theirs worked out. High school was still working on theirs. Because as you can imagine, some of those coaches that they thought were going to be teaching classes, now that they're going to be taking on the athletics within the school, hey, that has created some challenges, because it lifts some policies or some electives. So they're working, they're working through that right now. So that's definitely one of the concerns I have right now. Staffing is continuing to be a concern. Principals are not sure who is returning and who isn't returning. We don't have all the intent letters back, so that's another challenge that they're facing, is knowing exactly who they, who they will be needing to replace. And then another concern, I was looking at enrollment, and I'm sure Mr. Wilson can speak to this, but in 2021, the 2020, 21 school year, there were 2,148 students at Watson Chapel. And as of today, we have 1,680 enrolled. So that's a loss of 468 students. So with that comes the need to right-size the district, which then also you have to start looking at things like your salary schedule, staffing, prioritizing staffing. Are we understaffed in some areas and understaffed in others? So that's creating some challenges, challenges as well. So those are just some areas I want to highlight, and then also some concerns that we have. And then, of course, I'm sure you saw in the report that we have some concerns about special education. And so we have asked for in-site monitoring by the Office of Special Ed, and that's going to be conducted, probably starting in the next few days. We did have an initial introduction visit yesterday with the assistant commissioner, Matt Sewell, as well as director of special ed, Dr. Chip Adams. So we'll get, we'll get that started and have a better, extensive report later.
When do you think we could have the special education report? Before the end of the school year?
Oh, definitely. He's, I talked to him about that yesterday. And their goal is to have it ready before the main state board meeting. But I mean, that's, you know, it might be, it might be later in May, before they can finalize it. But that's the goal, right?
Okay. Yeah, and I'll just kind of put a little bit of emphasis on that. We've got folks in there who are supporting them in improving special education services. But when it becomes a concern, where we're concerned that IEPs are not being followed, or that students themselves are not getting the services that we believe that is outlined in their IEP, that's when we're asking for them to come in and do a full monitoring visit, where they're actually pulling IEPs, looking at goals, looking at the instructional pieces, and making sure that kids are getting what is outlined in their, their contract through an IEP. So we are, we're there for kids first. And so the OCSS team will take very seriously any time that they think that students are not being served. And so this is an action to say, we need somebody else to come in here and look very specific at students, and what they're supposed to be getting, and making sure that's lined up.
Let me ask our board if there's any other questions. Dr. Moore?
No, thank you, Sheila, for working with us and bringing to us today.
Ms. Hunter, any questions?
I actually have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So Sheila, you mentioned that the letters of intent are not in yet, coming in slowly then, or is there a due date, where we just presume the answer is no?
Yes, I believe they, we sent those out like February 1st, and we'd like to have them in within two weeks if possible. And usually, we get, we got more like last year we did this year. So this year, responses were less and less. And of course, it does put us in a bind. They hold them to the end. We've made several registrations in the past week or so. We've got, we're advertising for teachers. We're doing everything we can to get certified staff in. Twelve, forty teachers, we had twenty-one that were all of us. Three or four of them have certification now before May 1st. So they'll be, we'll just, we rehire next year. We're trying to improve everything we can. Now, we are in a financial crunch by losing students each year, and that does create a problem for it. And it's been happening over the years. But one thing I said when I came in here, that, you know, we're going to make a decision to keep this district, to keep Watson Chapel where it is. And we're going to make this district successful. We're going to improve test score. The thing that we're really trying to do is stop the drop in enrollment. We are going to build a new school. It starts construction May 1st. There's some good things going on, but each year from last third quarter to this third quarter, I believe it's about 100, 112 students that we may lose. We don't know how many students may go totally on student choice yet, or do the voucher system. I hadn't heard of one voucher yet from the district, but I know that's coming. So we're doing everything we can to stop this drop in enrollment. That's one of the keys we have. We've got to provide everything for the kids too. And it's a balancing act between budget and how many employees we can hire, how many are leaving. We have a lot of twelve, forty employees. Of course, we want certified, we want them to get certified too in our area, where they'll do a better job of teaching. In the past several years, I think people have come and gone through this office, and maybe they don't care as much as I do about Watson Chapel. But I graduated from here, and I want it to be successful. And I want definitely to be here. We're all here for these kids, and we want them to have a viable future. And we want to provide everything we need to provide.
Well, thank you for that. So from a, so a teacher retention standpoint, and you said you had, you've had some more recent resignations. The contracts are coming back slower this year than last year. I mean, is there a morale problem? I mean, what do you think is the root cause of this human capital crunch that it sounds like you're experiencing?
Okay, I can relate this. And I know it's what the- Okay, I can relate this and I know it's, we can follow up on this, but in the past, we had a violent problem in the schools, in the community. A lot of violence, a lot of shooting. We did have a student that was shot and killed in the hallway over here about four years ago. That created a lot of students leaving the district, a lot of parents taking their kids out or going to different places. Also, the athletic problem has been down with the transfer rule and school choice rule, they can play other schools so they go to winter, you know? So we lose students that way. We're trying to improve those programs. We're advertising for new head coaches right now. One of our coaches was here about, I think, 34, 35 years, won five-state championships in girls' basketball. She retired and so we got to make a good hire there because we have some good players coming up. We shouldn't want to lose these players. You know, we don't want to lose these students either. That's why we got, everybody has to do their job. We have to do our job and make sure everybody is doing everything they can to successfully these kids. We've got to improve test score. We know that and we are improving. Miss Dee's done a great job working with principals, done a great job with the literacy parts. We're moving, making some progress forward. We always want to keep the needle going up, what we call it. And that's what we're trying to do. The parents, we're going to get out of the community this summer. We're going to meet with parents. I have a new.
So Mr. Wilson, thank you. I just want to add in something real quick. There is a, the, yeah, the staff, there is a morale issue at the school. Faculty, there's a disconnect between administration, faculty. All that plays into retention. So that is something that the OCSS team is aware of and that folks are addressing and working with right now.
Can I go back to the timeline of contracts really quickly? So they went out February 1st. From that response, I can assume maybe there wasn't a due date for them to be returned?
Generally, when they're doing, they probably did intents, intent to returns and not actual contracts. Intents are usually within like a 30-day period that they're asking folks to turn those back in.
And he said sometimes people will hold them to the end. Did he mean the end of that 30 days or does he mean the end of the school year?
It's probably based on the practices within their district. Most districts would ask for those to be returned within 30 days and they would issue contracts based on what those intents were. I would think for Watson Chapel this year, looking at their numbers, looking at their number of classes that they need. Again, master schedule was an issue last year when they started school. They didn't have the right teachers hired or the right staffing. So that is paramount right now. They need to get that right. They need to know very clearly what teachers they need, who they need, and be trying to get, make sure that those contracts are nailed down. And if they have holes, advertising for those. And so right now, their master schedule at the high school, as Sheila indicated, is not set because they've been making some changes. And so again, getting drilled down to exactly what it is, what staffing they need, so that they know what contracts they need. So there's clarity that still is needed around that. And staff is unsure. They're not sure what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, that just sounds like a vicious cycle to me, you know, to be honest. Like that, you know, there's a morale problem and then the staff doesn't know what's happening. And I mean, it just sounds like a downward spiral.
Yeah, and when we get into situations like this, you're seeing multiple systems that are failing, right? You're seeing academics are suffering because of all these other issues that are happening within the school system. It's not just one. And every time we stand before, we try to give you a very transparent view, especially when we get into districts that are in situations like this. This is a critical time for this school district, for the superintendent and this board. And again, you've asked multiple times, Ms. Hunter, how well aware is their local board? I'm not sure. I mean, they know that we're in there working, but I'm not sure how well aware that they are aware of the critical status of their school right now. They've got a lot of work to do, a lot of work.
They do have a lot of work to do. And I will tell you personally, I am extremely disappointed that no one from their board has participated in, you know, from the very beginning of Watson Chapel coming in and meeting with us, was that in September, October timeframe? No one from their board has, to my knowledge, contacted the state, expressed any interest in what's happening, you know, on this monthly basis with these exchanges between us and Mr. Wilson and Miss Davis. I find that troubling and very disappointing.
We will, OCSS will reach out to the board president and offer an invitation to attend.
I wanted to clarify some, something that you and I spoke about last time. I really do appreciate seeing the, the stats on the dyslexia screeners and where those numbers are. We know that we have to go beyond a screener in order to, it's going to take more than just a screener to make sure that their needs are met. And we spoke last time about, Ms. Smith and I, about a notification period for parents that, you know, we know that in ABC classrooms, after a screener is given, the school has seven days to contact parents and follow up with the results of that. We spoke last time about perhaps there being a 30-day window. And I wanted to follow up and make sure that that was correct and that, because I think we may have.
Yeah, those rules are currently being written right now. So they're going in and actually putting, making sure that numbers of days are for level ones, level, so the level one, there's always been a suggested number of days in the Dyslexia Resource Guide, but not necessarily in rule. But they have put those in the rules that'll be coming to this board.
Okay, and I hope that we can find some alignment between that K-12 space that what we're doing in ABC, seven days is a very short window, but it's very necessary. We know early intervention is best. So to jump from, you know, a pre-K4 classroom has a seven-day window to a kindergarten classroom might have a 30-day window feels not aligned. So I hope that we can find some alignment there.
Thank you.
I just want to add, because I think the fitting of, the timing of this conversation is fitting considering the rule that we just put out for comment on transformation contracts. When you hear about multiple systems, I'm hearing all across the board, multiple systems aren't aligned to support what students need. This is a district that should take advantage of that opportunity to find a partner to come in and help them get these systems in place and build something that they can sustain on their own so that they don't come to this board under state authority. And that's what I would recommend that the superintendent and that board consider. I think this is, timing of this rule is perfect and I think our agency would be willing to help them explore those options.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have reports.
We're good.
I think so.
So, board, if it's okay, what I like to do, there's been so many wonderful things happening, I think, in this last month all across education. It's an exciting time of the year as schools are looking at the celebrations to wrap up the conclusion of another successful year while also planning, we're hearing about planning next year and summer programs. And yesterday, we got to hear a wonderful State of the State delivered by Governor Sanders and start working with our legislature as we're opening up the budget where education is being prioritized and in supporting Learns implementation is definitely a priority of our agency moving forward. And we've had some recent announcements that we're really proud of, especially with our School Choice Division to open up the next rounds of our Educational Freedom Accounts. And if you remember, the criteria to qualify was a little more stringent in year one and it opened up a little bit more in year two and then we're getting ready for year three. And there's going to be more rules coming to our board. But it's been very well received by parents and lots of people are applying. But one of the, one of the big components that I was really excited about in working on with Arkansas Learns and I think this board is a little bit excited about is how do we recognize and celebrate and elevate career and technical education in the K-12 space while we're setting up students to be successful beyond high school, which is, which is ultimately one of our goals? So it's very fitting to see we've got like our early learning folks here. We started in an early learning place and we're hearing a lot about K-12. And one of the requirements that was in Arkansas Learns was, was really to work with districts to identify not just career pathways. We've already had some priorities on saying schools need to offer at least three career pathways, but identifying pathways that meet a state definition of what is high skill, high wage, what is, what is high demand? Well, we didn't have a definition that, that outlined that or defined this. So we worked with our workforce cabinet and our commerce and our higher ed folks and business partners. And it's one of the work groups have been really working hard on getting that definition together and then really doing an analysis of the 60 career pathways and saying, how many of them meet that definition? What is the formula or methodology to do that? And how are we prioritizing career and technical education? So what I'd like to do is have Dr. Warden come up and I don't know if Ross is going to join him or not, but just to talk about what did that mean? What does it look like? And what are those pathways? And why is this a big deal? And why is the state of Arkansas leading the nation in this work? Because we're not aware of any other states that are doing anything quite like this.
Well, Secretary Lea, thank you. It's a privilege to be here, board members. Before I start with the H2 job descriptions, how to man, I want to circle back to a question that Ms. Woods had. Just a pat on the back to our adult ed colleagues, groups led by Dr. Trinian Miles. They had served 16,000 students last year across all their services. Now, that includes ESL and literacy and things like that. But they actually had 9,200 enrolled in GED and graduated with high school, 2,800 GEDs last year. So that's a good number. They had had some, some good news last year. They ranked fourth in the nation on GED pass rates. So a lot of times, they don't get the pats on the back, but that's a good complementary component to higher ed and our elementary, secondary folks that, that we need in Arkansas because we want to help all our candidates. So just want to follow up on that. I heard the question and was able to.
Thank you.
Find out, find those numbers before I got to the lectern. So I want to start by thanking Secretary Lea. I want to start by thanking Ross for leading the career and technical division and Stacy for all the work that we collaborated, collaborated will be done and their work groups have done to get us to this point today. Today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about success-ready graduates and career-ready pathways. We were tasked with the Learns Act to develop a career-ready pathway. When I heard this, it really piqued my interest because I'm a proud champion of higher education, including career technical education, which is, is higher education. And I knew that we had to do something that made a career pathway, everything a high school diploma was, and then something else. Because a lot of times, we want to bifurcate career technical education and education or higher education. And that's a mistake that has not served us well. So we no longer need, you know, small, core, smart core, which means you have a smart core and not so smart core. We have a high school diploma that we're going to expect every one of our students to achieve. And then we're creating ways that students can distinguish themselves into a diploma distinction through career technical pathways or other pathways. So I want to talk to you a little bit about that. And there's a graphic that you can see on, on the slide there this morning that talks a little bit about those, what those sequences are, what the academic core is, those purposely aligned courses and how they, you know, fold in community service and then demonstrate readiness. But basically, what we did is we have around 60 frameworks for career, career and technical education opportunities, 60. And we knew that not all of those led to high-wage, high-demand jobs. So we went through a process to operationally define high-wage, high-demand. Now, without getting into the, to the nuts and bolts of it, it was a pretty extensive arduous process, but we landed at high-wage using some numbers from the MIT Living Wage Calculator. And that number that we landed at was about $39,700 for an individual to be considered employed in a high-wage job. And then we defined high demand, looking at the number of employees needed in that occupation across the state. And we manipulated those back and forth, but we kind of found a sweet spot and that was about a 0.4% of employment across the state. And it took us from 60 to the 18 most in-demand occupations. So then we took our frameworks and aligned those at the high school level to what's called a CIP code, Classification Instructional Program, that we use in higher ed, that then aligns to an SOC code, Standard Occupation Code, in the, in the labor market. So it is a little complicated, but long story short, what we're doing is asking that all of our districts offer at least one of these 18. They have to offer three programs, but at least one of them need to be of these 18 that are high-wage, high-demand. Now, we would prefer that all three of them be in those areas, but we have some, some folks who have some really strong legacy programs that they're proud of and they're doing and working. And we're not saying that those aren't valuable. All of those have value. But the most valuable that we see based on wages and opportunity are the 18 that we've defined. So the next slide, you'll see what those 18 are. I'll give you just a second to look at those. It's not an exact science because we have, we have education paths that don't lead directly to a job. Now, if you're going to be an accountant, there's a, there's a program for you and it has a classification code that links to an accounting job. If you're going to be an automotive technician, there's a, there's a classification code that links to that job. But in some of our areas, let's say if you have a, an English degree, you're not going to go to work second shift on the English, on the English factory floor, right? So there's not exact, connect the dots. So we had to do a little bit of work on, you know, what it, what it is on pre-engineering, pre-educator, some of the plant systems, some of the other management degrees, what are the occupations in that? But long story short, this is where we landed. Now, this is not the only way to, these aren't, this is not a definitive or absolute process. In the next slide, you'll see that we have other ways for districts to come to us and have additional considerations for degrees. We may not know that there's an emerging industry around their district and that something is coming to them and they are, they're going to have a boon in this, in this particular job sector and they're going to need people to fill these positions. So they can come back to us and write a justification about the regional demand. They can reach out to their industry partners and have them sign off to say, yes, we are here to say that we need these, we need these students in these degrees or these pathways and this is what we're going to pay them once they complete these certifications. And then we'll consider that and we can add to this list. So the list is just, just a baseline. So if they have existing regional need that we didn't capture, or they have emerging need that we didn't capture, we look at that wage and that local demand and we can put that into the phone. So does that make sense for you? Because each one of our regions are a little unique. They all have their own assets around them and industry sectors. So we thought that was very important to give students or districts the opportunity to weigh into that. The next slide is just really a, a one pathway. We chose nursing services pathway just to kind of, to show you the continuum of what a set of skills that a nursing student or someone who wants to be a nurse and wants to pursue the healthcare industry, the skills, you know, they may learn six of the baseline skills in a secondary environment and then they're going to go to the post-secondary environment and they're going to pick up another nine or 10 skill sets in that. There's a CIP code for nurses there. And then you see as they reach employment, they're going to pick up all these other skills. So we're just trying to streamline and make it very, articulate the need and articulate the pathway in ways that are meaningful and aren't subjective. We didn't use just, this isn't Ken Warden's list or Secretary Lea's list or Ross's list or Stacy's list. This is a list that we put some logic behind to come to that we know that is going to serve students best. And so it's, it's pretty meaningful work. It's, I'm very, very, very honored and privileged to be part of it.
And if I could add to that, Dr. Warden, the jobs that are in high demand today may not be the jobs that are in high demand tomorrow. So this, this isn't a final list, right? This is, this is a living document that's going to be reviewed annually and make sure that we're creating those pathways and opportunities. So this is, it's great that they really established a framework or a process to have some operational definitions, but this is going to be an ongoing task and job.
Yeah, it's estimated that our students between now and the time they retire are going to have 12 career changes, not job changes, career changes. Think about, you know, in the next 18 months, there's going to be three new iterations of an iPhone. How do you keep up with that? They've seen more change in their lifetime and expected to see more in the acceleration of the rate of how many changes that the telephone, the frequency of the changes is increasing. So, you know, we teach them baseline skills, foundational skills. And, you know, I can't imagine being a young person, when someone, I was in high school and someone asked me, what are you going to do when you grow up? I had no idea, but I knew what the right answer was, right? I'm going to go be an engineer. I'm going to go to school and get an engine license when we're doing, it's going to be great. I didn't, wasn't formally trained to be the commissioner of higher education, I will tell you that. But, you know, things happen. But our kids, I think it's intimidating to ask them, what are you going to do when you grow up? What are you going to do for the rest of your life? How could they know? How could they know? So I think being sure that we guide them into paths that have a good foundation. So maybe it's not what they're going to do for the rest of their life, but it sets the stage for them to pivot to other things with these transferable foundational skills and betting durable skills now is the new term for soft skills or workforce skills, durable skills across the board. And we're doing some, some good work in that arena, too. So Stacy made me promise not to talk too much, so I'll go to our next slide. I felt it coming up behind me. Is she back there? Would you let me know, please? So this is just another infographic about the baseline for a high school diploma that we're going to expect all students to get and the other things they're going to do to distinguish themselves. And I'm just super excited again to say that we're going to show these opportunities to these students. We want talented students to recognize the opportunities and let, figure out the ways that they're going to distinguish themselves. Let them self-select whether they're going to go into more a career-ready out-of-high school pathway, or they're going to do more of that education in post-secondary, or if they want to go more academic and purely academic routes, that what we think of as traditional academic routes. Last but not least, the last slide, we also have ways to distinguish students other than just the career technical ways. So they could do that with a number of AP courses, they can do that with the Cambridge AICE, an International Baccalaureate Diploma, seal of, bio-literacy through the royal languages, or they can take 12 hours of post-secondary credit and distinguish themselves that way. So there's more than one opportunity for these students to distinguish themselves. We just need to show those opportunities, make sure that those, that they're high-wage, high-demand, and let them self-select into the ways that they want to separate themselves from their peers and do greater things. Hopefully, our districts will be encouraged to keep them in school so if they don't have holes in their schedules, their senior year, and when they come to post-secondary, we have a better input, so we have a better output. And it's just, it's exciting to be part of this continuum of education. So, thank you.
And if I could ask Dr. Warden also, add a foundational component in a big part of Learns when building out these different pathways? Because we know a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work for every child. But it really starts in, at least in middle school and maybe even a little bit earlier, talking about your career plan and your career pathway and some of the work you're doing with career coaches, I think, is important because that's impacting K-12 to set up this pipeline as well. And I think it'd be good for the board to get an update on that as.
Career coaches?
Yeah, and just kind of that process.
So Ross may have to help me with any of the details. We were fortunate to capture a Perkins Innovation and Modernization Grant from the Federal Department of Education, which if funding sustains, it could yield us over $3 million in the next three years and maybe some beyond that to expand the career coaching program to all counties in Arkansas. We're not there yet. So what a career coach does is help students plan their next steps and where they want to go and map those out and help them do everything they need to do to become prepared for that, you know, take, do their financial aid work for the FAFSA and for the state scholarships, also know where the opportunities are close to them and what the gap is between, you know, what they think they have or it's going to take to get there and what it's really going to take together to get there. We know that the earlier a student has a conversation about what the actual delta is between the money they have in their pocket and with the federal aid and state and what's going to take to get there, sometimes we get painted with this broad bush of high debt and no ROI in higher ed. But in fact, we know there's ROI in higher ed, whether it's certificates or diplomas or bachelor degrees. Most of the debt occurs in expensive graduate schools where, and the ROI doesn't happen because people don't get into the occupation that they paid so much to be for the graduate schools for. And Arkansas, with all of our opportunities, we have affordable opportunities in Arkansas for higher ed, and these career coaches are going to help map those processes for our kids. Ross, would you like to add anything to that?
Help him out, Ross.
Career coaches, we're in 54 of the 75 counties, and so our goal is to get to the 75 counties. And so we're a little over 100 career coaches right now in this year. And then with this grant, we obviously know we're going to be able to expand by 10 more. And then we have some other opportunities that should be able to get us in all 75 counties, hopefully in the next year or two, to ensure that we have that piece. The other big work that we've done a lot with Stacy and Dr. Pride is, we have Pope as well, worship has been student success plans. And so that tool that is there and that opportunity that is there for schools, because right now, I think a lot of people view it as a compliance piece, and oh, we've just got to do a student success plan. And it's checking a box to, here's the courses that we're ensuring students are going to graduate, and really is kind of revamping that of, how are we really talking about next steps post-graduation? What is that? And so we've spent a lot of time together working towards that, and then we know in the next year or two, really trying to bring it together as a statewide model. So then, as our career coaches work with that, we're doing the same thing across the board with our students and really ensuring that next step piece has been really big because also in Learns, we have our early career exposure piece that you haven't heard much about, but that will be coming about here in the next month or so, that are required activities in middle grades, so six, seven, and eight, about career exposure. And so the minimum number of activities for every student to be a part of and then kind of from a list from the state of these things that you can do and we recommend, and of course, allowing them locally to decide what's best for them as well. And so knowing that we marry those with student success plans to then with the work of their career coaches that then lends to hopefully a greater plan to just, what is that next step beyond high school graduation? So there is that, what I keep saying, that vertical alignment to that next post-secondary training or next step for our students, whether it be enlistment, enrollment, or employment.
Thank you, Ross. One last point. We are already designing the systems to measure these outcomes. We're working with the state longitudinal data system. So a few years from now, as these students that are creating these success-ready plans are already doing some of that, we are going to be able to tell you post-graduation by wage-match data, what their earnings were with a high school diploma or without, what they were with a diploma of distinction or without, and higher education attainment for our Kansasans. And so it's not going to, it's going to be, here's the data, here's the proof in the pudding. So excited about that work again, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. If you can't, I'm pretty passionate about this. I hope it shows.
It does. I'm excited to hear about the career coaches. From my experience, students and parents don't understand or know how to apply for scholarships, and it's almost like pulling teeth to get children to apply. And so to have those coaches there and know what's available is really important.
Well, and you know, the federal application for student aid, free application for federal student aid, FAFSA, it's had some changes this year, and it's really not going well at the federal level. So we've made some accommodations in higher ed to say, okay, we're going to conditionally approve your state scholarships, whether or not the Fed has let you know, because there's a lot of trouble going on with the federal.
So they're still having trouble with FAFSA?
Absolutely. They had more announcements last week. So they're still, you know, still kind of, well, they're just not taking care of their business in a timely manner. But we, you know, we can't let that affect our kids and our scholarships. We need to do everything we can to do to get them awarded and help them get on with it. But, you know, I.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I had heard about that, so that's great. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about the, you pointed out the nursing track and sort of those, almost like stackable credits that they could leave with some concurrent credit in high school, which would help in their undergraduate, you know, and lead further on. And there's a similar track for early childhood educators, the CDA. One thing that I would love, and, you know, scream from the rooftops about this, and we've spoke about this too, the, there are thousands of students, I think it was over 4,500 students in Arkansas, currently taking CTE courses in either child development, child development management, something along those lines, but only 88 receiving concurrent credit. And if we can create a path where similarly, kids can graduate high school with that CDA, background check, stun, fingerprint, all that is done, having studied in a program as excellent as we saw this morning, they can go and replicate that high-quality early learning, which will, you know, support all of our kids further down the line, certainly economic development as well. And it's that high-wage piece that's the one thing, you know, that, we talked about, where is that level? Is it 39,000? And interestingly enough, in Arkansas, there are so many school districts that are choosing to pay their ABC teachers at the same rate they are their K-12 teachers. They're choosing to pay them that $50,000. So in the way the rules are written in ABC classrooms, if there are multiple ABC classrooms within a school district and a single lead teacher that has that undergraduate degree, then the other teachers can have a CDA and still earn that $50,000. So there, we need to dig into that a little bit more so that we can support certainly a high-demand career pathway. I loved seeing the pre-educator pathway on there as well because we certainly know that we've prioritized that to become a high-wage job. So I appreciate the work you're doing, and I look forward to continuing to support early childhood in that way.
Thank you. And I will say that we did, ran the numbers last month, and we looked at students that graduated high school in 2016 and then up until 2023 in a six-year window, graduation or completion of a post-secondary credential. If, and we ran the data of those who took concurrent credit and those who didn't. If a student took a single class that counted for concurrent credit, that's where they got credit out of college, university campus or at the campus and then at the high school level, it doubled the odds that they would get a, some higher education award. So those awards were, you know, certificates of social degrees, bachelor degrees, doubled the likelihood that they would receive a higher education. So that's a big deal, and we need to be talking about that, promoting that, letting these kids know in high school they can succeed, letting them know that we're going to help them with their finances to get there, making sure they take a math class in their senior year, right, Secretary Lea, and get them on with it. And we do have some very creative higher ed programs. I hate to, you know, you can't, you've got to love all your children, you can't call out one particularly, but we have a lot of creative and good things coming in concurrent credit education for pre-K, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just really excited about the direction that we're going into. Obviously, me having a technical background and knowing how important this is, for many years, we really thought osmosis was going to fix the problem. And now, when you see that we have a clear, defined plan, it's really refreshing because, you know, there's power in having a roadmap. You know, we got this roadmap now. It gives us direction, it gives us a blueprint, and it's power also in having a pathway. When you got a pathway, you have acceleration. We've seen that with School of Choice. So, you know, I'm just really happy, and I know it took a lot of people and a lot of effort and a lot of attention to get this down the right path. And I think going forward, I also like the fact of, you know, this is not one and done. You know, this is what, we're going to evaluate this, we're going to continue looking at it, we're going to look at all the new stuff coming down the pipeline to make it better. So kudos to everyone involved in that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Dr. Moore, did you have any questions or comments?
Not at this point, thank you all.
Okay. Ms. Hunter?
None for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, did we have any public comments today? No? Okay. All right. Well, then I guess this, do we need a motion to adjourn the meeting? Or can I just?
I don't know how we do that without Mr. Southern.
Well, we'll just go ahead and adjourn our meeting, and thank you to everyone today.
And thank you to ASU, once again. All the hospitality and the live stream. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Y'all outside, travel home.
Yes, thanks for joining us.